Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Higher for Township Board of Commissioners Work Session for Monday, August 7, 2017. The Board did meet in executive session at 6 o'clock to discuss a legal matter. Mr. Secretary, would you please take the role?
Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes is on vacation this week. Mr. McGarry?
Here.
Mr. Wexler?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Here. For those that can, if everyone could please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome this evening to the work session. And to begin the work session off, we have a construction manager's update. Mr. Brennan, if you'd like to approach the podium, please.
Thank you. Good evening. We'd like to get a change order approved. It was in the monthly report. It is for added electrical work for the fuel station. We're looking to get a not-to-exceed number approved because at this time, we just received the last revision to the pricing, and we need some time to negotiate it. The value of that would be $57,000. The reason for this is it's due to, the contract was written for the electrical work under the building work itself, and then there was another separate project for the fuel station for the police, and that was also done. And now, this change order essentially is marrying the two together to get the electrical scope of work correct and proper to allow the fuel station to be approved and to pass through the state inspection.
Okay.
Just curious as to why that wasn't anticipated up front?
They were just two separate projects itself, and then this is just getting it together as one. And some of the work, obviously, is in this contract because electrical contractor, you don't want anybody else going into his panels, essentially. So he has to do that work because you don't want to go with any warranties.
Okay, and that'll be on the agenda for next week.
Okay, yeah, and the only reason we brought it to you, just because it was a time-sensitive issue, holding up a building parking lot and some other stuff. So that was the only reason we would bring it to you without being fully negotiated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. As far as an update, the schedule now, I know we were reporting of early September. Now, it looks like the latter part of September for completion of the first floor. The contractors are working on finishes itself. The first floor is about 95% painted. Ceiling grid is all in. We're working with the mechanicals above the ceiling and to put equipment into the ceiling grid itself, and then we'll start dropping ceiling tiles and start flooring next week. We just started up the rooftop equipment last week, and we'll have that fully running so that the building is humidity and temperature controlled to allow the floor finishes to go down. And we're also working towards getting the water line moved, which should happen this week, and then tying in the storm sewer out in the road so then we can start finishing up fixtures, testing those. And we're working towards getting the gas line hooked up now that we have that wall installed. The second floor is proceeding along. They are probably about 75% done with walls. The roughens are proceeding and nearing completion. And, you know, with the first floor turnover, a lot of the systems itself have to be started up and have to already happen, so the second floor should go a little bit smoother and allow the finishes. And we'd also like to invite all the commissioners to take a tour of the building. We have a biweekly job conference, so the 21st at 3:30, everybody will be out of there so we can walk through and we don't have to worry about any of the contractors. Myself and Lori, the architect and the engineer, will all be there and be available for questions and to walk through the space if anybody would like to attend.
So you believe that by the end of September, the police should be able to begin to occupy that building?
They should be able to begin the build-out of their furniture, which I understand is going to take two weeks, and then start moving into that space, yes.
So everything will be completed, including, there's two garages from what I, is that correct? And they'll be ready?
The outbuilding you're talking about, yes. So it'll be ready for the police to walk in?
Yeah, and to transport?
In late September?
Anyone that was arrested, right?
He's Sallyport.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Will be operational.
And then the rest of the building will be completed sometime?
It will be completed in December, yes. Actually, the first, on the second floor will be complete with the IT suite because that needs to be operational for the police to come in and occupy. But everything else will be December.
And then the old police station will come down in October?
That'll follow as soon as, I believe there's, after the build-out of the furniture, a couple of weeks of moving, and then there's two weeks of asbestos abatement, which is awarded under a separate contract. Once that's wrapped up, then the tear-down of the building will happen.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda we have here, Mrs. Widop with the Macro Energy Contractor for the street lighting presentation, Phase Three.
Hello. As the Board knows, we've been working on a program of streetlight retrofits, replacing many of the old mercury vapor and high-pressure sodium lights with energy-efficient LED lights. The streetlight retrofit is part of the Township's Climate Protection Action Plan, and we are into, will be commencing Phase Three now. The first phase involved a retrofit of lighting at the stadium, which was interior and exterior. The second was, and I'm sorry, the West Gate Hills neighborhood. That was the pilot program for the lights to see how residents reacted to the type of lighting. That was 100 lights. We just did all of Ward Four and three precincts in Ward Three recently as Phase Two. Ward Four was selected first because it had the highest number of streetlights. We went for the biggest number. I believe the total was 672 lights. I'm getting my cues from the contractor. And that has put us on a path to look at what we could do with Phase Three by the end of this year. Now, Phase Three initially, when we received the pricing, was limited to two precincts in the second ward, two precincts in the eighth ward, and one precinct in the third ward. So there were five precincts being developed there instead of the seven precincts we had just done. And that was just a question of, everything that we have done to fund this, the Board hasn't allocated additional funding at all. This is all being done leveraging commodity savings, energy savings on the lights, and whatever we can fit into our operational budgets. The cost of the retrofits are being paid for, if you will, but in installments to the utility. It's a tri-party agreement between our utility company, Constellation, the contractor, Macro Energy, and the township. So the utility pays the contractor to do the work. We repay the utility in the installments on our electric bill.
Can I ask you just a question? Have there been any objections or concerns about the lighting expressed by any residents?
On the contrary, we've gotten a lot of compliments about the light, the clarity of the light, especially where we're replacing high-pressure sodium lights because they have a different type of light, and you can't see, like, a lot of colors at night, and there's just a lack of clarity, whereas the LED is a lot clearer. And because the technology has improved so much, when we initially did some work a few years back?
They had a nice one.
Yeah. We got some complaints about, like, the blue hue, and this is a warmer light. It's more easy to adjust and direct them. Where we have had complaints about the brightness, we've applied shields to the fixtures to address that. So we have been getting pretty good feedback on this. As a matter of fact, I guess the commissioners, I know it's in your ward, in your neighborhood, Larry and Steve, and I know that the third and fourth ward commissioners have some experience with this. The initial work that we did many years ago was actually ninth ward primarily. So, and that was heavier into a different type of lighting. It was called induction lighting that you see inside a lot of factories, induction lights, and that, it's not as energy-efficient as the LED, and the LED was not, it didn't meet a lot of our, the standards for PICO for some of the rebates. There was a lot of problems with the LED. That's all changed. It's a whole new generation of LED lights, and we're taking advantage of that.
I ask you one other question. You said we have a, Constellation is our energy provider, so what is, how long is our contract with them? Because every, you know, as a consumer, every six months, I'm shopping for a new electric supplier. So what is, what do we do when it comes to that?
Well, when we go out looking for prices and we pit the utilities against one another and sort of try to drive the prices down, and when we do it, we take a look at what they're offering in terms of 12-month, 18-month, and 24-month contracts typically. Here, one of the proposals actually would be to extend the contract out. Our current contract runs till December 2020. And at the end of December 2020, some of the installments drop off, the installments for the work that was done at the stadium and the work that was done at, in West Gate. We extended that contract just for the repayment so it would come in on budget. In this particular request, however, we had three proposals from the contractor to do some work, and that one proposal that comes in under budget is to do precinct 2-1, 2-2, 8-2, 8-3, and 3-3.
5-4, 5-2, 5-1.
We're getting there. Well, that's one of the options. Let me go from there. Okay. And then we had another option that was all of the second ward, all of the eighth ward, and 3-3, so that we were cleaning up the wards. Then the third option was the first ward because we only had one precinct that we finished there. We need to go in and finish the other three precincts, all of the second, all of the fifth, all of the eighth, and 3-3. So we're trying to take chunks out of, we have 3,600 streetlights, so we're trying to knock them out, but it's a very expensive proposition. So in one of our meetings, Amy Cutherson and I have been meeting with the utility and Larry Gentile and Doc. And in one of the meetings, we had a conversation, and the contractor actually said, "Well, with your next proposal, the unit price comes down because you've hit a certain tier." So of course, the antenna went up, and we all asked, "Well, what happens if we finished out all of the second and eighth ward?" And they said, "Well, you'll hit another tier, and you'll have savings on purchasing the units themselves." So to do the five precincts that we talked about, we would save, we'd have a 6% discount on the fixtures. They would be $435.66 a piece, and that is 543 lights because if you take into consideration what we've already purchased in this calendar year for wards three and four and add it to this number, we get into that tier. Then there's another tier, if we finish all of 8-2 and 3, we come to a 12% savings on the unit prices. They drop to 404.84 a unit. That would be a total of 983 fixtures purchased. Or the final option, wards 1, 2, 5, 8, and precinct 3-3, total 1,619 units, and because that throws us well over a 2,000-unit threshold, the savings jump to 34% per unit. So the unit price comes down to 305.33. Obviously, we can't cover that out of our operational expenses. To do so would result in a tax increase, and we all know how much you enjoy a tax increase. You don't want to consider that. You want us to look at other options. So one of the options is, since you're in, you're starting your budget preparation now, is to look at your reserves, and you have, like, a mandated reserve account where you've decided that this is how much money you're going to set aside, like rainy day stuff, and how much over that mandate you have right now for this calendar year. And using that reserve money and applying it to this as a one-time thing. It's not, the reserves funds cannot be used, and Amy will shoot me if I don't say, it cannot be used to plug holes in a budget. But if you have this overage at this particular time, you may have an opportunity to see some savings, and it's just one thing to consider when you're working on your budget Do you have any questions about the program?
It happens to be a rainy day out there.
Lori, can I ask the contractor a couple things? Number one, are these lights, like, they're all above ground? Yeah.
This is Steve Hirschenreider. He's with Macro Energy. He's the president of the company.
In my ward, which is the seventh ward, along Arlington Road, Ridgeway Road, there's underground wiring, okay? Now, are these lights all going to be above ground?
These are all above ground. These are all mounted on the poles.
So there'll be no more underground?
Yes.
Okay. That's number one. Number two, who do we go to when you have a light out? Now, you just installed lights along 38, along Brayburn Road, okay? One of those lights is already out.
Right, and it'll be fixed on Thursday. So Macro Energy is the, takes on the warranty obligation for the full 10 years that the manufacturer offers that warranty, and we do that both product and labor. So there's a single point of contact, Macro Energy, who comes out and actually fixes these for you at no cost to the township.
Okay, but you know about the 38 Brayburn?
Yes, yeah, we were informed about that.
Okay. And, oh, the other thing, I assume you're talking, when you say eighth ward and third ward, and there's those stand-up lights? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we would call them a post hopper.
Yeah. Okay, well, in the seventh ward, I have two of them. Just two, but I do have two. So I didn't hear the seventh ward mentioned in that.
Yeah, I don't believe.
Seventh ward is not in this phase.
Well, someday we're going to be there, I hope.
You are. Someday you are.
Ladies and gentlemen, the seventh ward. Did you hear that?
Someday you are going to be there. But for this particular phase, we're really focused on Phase Three, which is something that we had initially anticipated doing a kickoff before the end of this calendar year, again, to try and take advantage of an economy of scale in terms of purchasing everything in this calendar year that, to add to what we've already purchased.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
Anything else?
No. Commissioner, you gave us, you gave us the savings in terms of percentages. Can you give it to us in dollars?
Uh, yeah.
So if we go that, the difference between the 34% and the next two tiers?
Yeah, you're at $130 a piece.
I meant total, you know, for the whole project.
So we can see for budgeting. Do you have the top line now?
He wants to know.
There's 404 then 305.
1619 times, oh, that's almost like 490, 490. But I think he's talking about the savings. 1619 times 130. I'm not, I, I could take my shoes off if we can get to 20.
But no, you, but you talked about, if you did X number in one phase, and what the total was for that phase, if we did the next, if you got the 693 units, and then the next one was, if you got over the 2,000 tier?
Yes.
What that would be, so we can see what the impact on the budget would be.
The over 2,000 tier, that, I'm breaking it out into tiers in terms of unit because it's easy to look at that way. It's about a $210,000 savings.
Okay. That's gross.
I did want to mention to you that the person at 38 Brayburn said the new lights are very attractive and better lit on the streets, so they were, they're happy about it. They just want 38 fixed, but they're happy about the rest of the lights.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
How long does it take roughly to complete a ward?
It's weather-dependent, which is always so tough, but as a point of reference, when we did the pilot project around 100 fixtures, it took us three days to complete all.
About 100 fixtures, okay.
So about 33 to 35 a day per team.
All right, thank you.
And I can just say that it's been a big improvement, and I have had no complaints at all. So you can't have better than none, but it, you notice the difference. It's a definite improvement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Widop, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have allocations for the skate park. I'm sorry, did you have?
No.
No, you're good, okay. Mr. Denny is not here this evening.
But I can answer any questions.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mary.
No, I just talked to Mr. Denny prior to the, to that, but this is the $35,000 to complete the skate park over in Merrick Place.
And it is budgeted.
Yeah, and it's budgeted, so there's no questions there about where the money's coming from. So this would be, you know, concrete built at the location for, you know, would finish, making it permanent, making the Merrick Place the permanent home of the skate park. And Mike's in the audience there. He approves of, of the, the skate park committee approves of this, am I correct? Yes, he is shaking his head yes.
The location.
The location and the type of the equipment. They had, they had a lot of say in what was going to be there, so.
It's been a big success.
What is the? Do we anticipate they'll be able to complete this this year, or is it construction next?
Absolutely, yes. Once we approve it officially next week, we'll institute it, and it shouldn't take more than a few weeks to get it done, so.
Great.
Yeah.
And changes to the ordinance regarding the dogs in the park?
Yeah, there's actually a few items. Do you want to?
Yeah, I can talk about that, too. What I was worried about with this ordinance was the changes to the ordinance regarding the dog parks, and I know Tim talked about it, also was children who have, who are allergic to dogs, and if we allow those dogs to be around the perimeter, if we have children around that perimeter, right now, what would happen is if a child, if a parent had a child, that dog would be, would have to go away. They'd have to take the dog away. But with this ordinance, it would allow the dog to be there so both the child and the dog had the same right to be there. And this is, this is something that was troubling to me because I have residents who do have children who are allergic, and so I believe, in speaking to Mr. Denny, he has added some language to the, to this ordinance so that the children are, we can discuss it more in the, you know, when Tim's here, but.
We're not going to, I'm sorry, were you putting this on for next Monday?
Yeah.
I have real concerns about this. I mean, I'm a dog person. Everyone here knows that.
Oh, yeah.
I love dogs. But I think dogs in the parks, my concern is when they mess, and most people have a bag, and they use the bag to pick up the mess, you don't get it all. And so you're going to have a lot of waste left over.
Commissioner, could I read the two, the things that Mr. Denny and I discussed prior to me going away? The two things that he would actually add to is that dogs are permitted in the parks only on the pathways, trails, passive areas, and within 10-foot perimeter of the park. All the dogs must be in control by the handler and on a leash. The leash cannot be any longer than six foot. Dogs are not permitted in playground areas, athletic fields, courts, buildings, or pavilions. Handlers must properly clean up and dispose of the waste. No other domestic animals are allowed without a permit. They're the two.
Okay, so let's just take West Gate Park. Where would dogs be allowed?
Well, if there's not a trail or.
Be on the perimeter.
Within 10-foot of the perimeter.
Within the perimeter.
And every place in that park is where people are. Every place. There's not, I mean, it's not that big of a park, and so almost every square foot is used by residents. If not playing baseball, they're playing basketball. If not playing basketball, they're playing hockey, or they're in the play area there, or they're in the perimeters over there.
Well, that 10-foot area, isn't that a coexisting area? Is that the area set up for coexistence for both dogs and people?
You know, I couldn't, I couldn't comment, and we would have to wait for Tim to come back to give you an answer to that question. I mean, we're doing this because there's multiple requests from the residents.
I understand. I mean, look, as I said, I'm a dog person as well. I love dogs, and I wish I still had one, but I also have to look at, I think, as Mary was bringing up, the, you know, the health and safety of, I don't like children, but everyone that plays there. I mean, you're not going to pick it all up, and some, even 10 feet, wherever. I mean, West Gate Park, I just don't know where they would be able to do that. I'm wondering, did this go before any of our committees, or?
Yeah, this went in front of the park recommittee.
This is their.
Yeah. Can you come up to the mic? Just, just so the public can hear you.
Representing the park, you get name in representing the committee?
Michelle Albrecht, I'm from the Parks Board. We did discuss this at great lengths, and we conceded to make it a six-foot lead versus the state-mandated 10-foot lead so that it would contain the dog closer to the person. And we already, apparently, and I don't know the number, have an ordinance about picking up dog waste, so people know that they have to pick that up. And I get that you're right, it could happen that they don't pick 100% of it up.
They never.
But I, I haven't been to every park, but, and yes, West Gate's tight, so I don't know if that 10-foot actually overlaps any field or so forth, but they can't go on the courts. So the hockey court and the basketball court and the play area, the playground, are already out of limits. But the perimeter, yes, so I don't, I didn't measure every, we didn't measure every park. So, but yes, we discussed it at great lengths at our Parks Board meeting to come up with this verbiage and, and get it handled as soon as possible because it's a conflict, and apparently, the animal warden is confused. Some parks say no, some parks say yes, so it's just to make it more consistent throughout the entire township.
Yeah, I would, I'm not ready to vote for this next month. I think there's still so many unanswered questions, and I think, you know, thanks to the park board, but maybe have the Parks Board come and give appreciation on every park? And where? Where would it, where would it be? I mean, I just don't think we're ready. I think there's so many.
Maybe we should just discuss this when Tim's here, so.
That's fine, but I'm not ready to vote for this on Monday. I mean, you know.
We can table it if we so choose.
Yeah, I mean, I think, look, you know.
We should have it on the agenda, at least.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But, but I, yeah, I think that if we can't get some of the answers, I mean, I don't know if Parks Board's going to have time to do a presentation on Monday. Who's your chairman now? Is it?
Well, as far as time, I don't think we have the time for presentation on Monday.
No, there's no.
Yeah, that's why it was coming tonight, but.
What is the, can I just ask you about the ordinance for, maybe you don't know, and Lori just stepped out, but what's the fine for not curbing your dog?
I think it's $300.
Is that the maximum we could impose? Could we impose more?
I thought we were going to do that.
I would impose whatever is the absolute maximum.
I think usually up to $1,000.
Well, we got to seriously think about, because there's no excuse for not curbing your dog.
I thought we, I thought we addressed that.
So whatever the maximum fine is.
I'm just saying, that's not an ordinance we discussed.
So anyway. I want, that should be hand-in-hand, in my view. I mean, I want to make sure that the fine is very severe.
When this comes up, if you decide not to table it, table it, but you can certainly bring that up and make that recommendation, and Tim can change.
Yeah.
And come back with a revised.
I thought we did that, and he brings up a good point because, because of where we're going to be.
Well, I mean, I just, I don't know what the specific curb is, but I mean, I think the $300 fine was for this language that Tim provided here.
Yeah.
So I don't know if the curb, the curbing the dog is a separate ordinance altogether.
Yeah.
I don't know what that fine is.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
The 300 number comes from.
I don't, I don't know whether, we want to make sure it's, you know, enforced, obviously, but you want to make it sure that people know that there's a severe penalty for not curbing your dog. And again, there's no excuse for not doing it. So, anyway, we should just discuss what that amount should be, whether it should be 300 or 400 or 500 or, you know, whatever it might be.
Curbing is already on the books.
It already is.
Yeah, I'm just saying $300 is not enough in my mind.
I agree. I totally agree with that.
Just like littering, there's no excuse for littering. And I'd make that $1,000, too, if it were up to me.
Put him in jail.
I would. Wow.
We'll have a new one, we'll have a new jail.
Let's come down a little bit, don't you? Especially when people throw out their cigarette butts. I just want to, I work for the fact of road rage, and I wouldn't go up and knock on every window and, and issue a citizen citation.
Mr. McGarry?
No, the question I have is when a constituent asks you, well, they see a dog running wild down the police station, and maybe the trainer's there with the dog or whoever, who do you call? You're not gonna call the animal warden, he's not working at nighttime, so who do you call?
Police.
Police.
Call 911.
So you would tell them to call 911, and they'll send an officer over.
But see, Jimmy brings up a good point, I mean, that's the other problem, how many calls are gonna be made? Trust me, the police, you're gonna, it's gonna really hurt.
Well, it goes both ways, I mean, you, you know, you've got people calling for dogs in the park that aren't supposed to be there too, so.
Well, yeah, but not as much as you're gonna flood them with dogs now.
Yeah, well.
Well, so we're gonna keep it on the agenda and bring up for discussion.
I personally think it's a, it's a safety, health issue, really, more than anything. I mean, again, I love dogs, I don't mind, I mean, I wish I could bring dogs into the park. The problem is, if you bring all these dogs into a park, and the dogs mess, and they urinate, and you're just not gonna be able to clean it up appropriately, that amount, that amount of dogs.
I'm just playing devil's advocate here, we do have animals in the park defecating, and that, I mean, I see deer walking through, I see raccoons, I see all sorts of animals walking through the park. In fact, the other morning, what did I say, we saw on-
Box or something?
Were two deer on Washington Avenue, right by the, right by the creek there, and ducks inside the creek, and the ducks are walking up.
You're right, I mean, I've seen them on Glendale, but there's not, you don't, geese are in the, in the golf course, that's amazing.
Quarry Center or there?
Yeah, they're in the, all over the quarry center.
And they attack people, but.
There is an exception for service dogs?
Yes.
There was, there are the ones that are allowed at any-
Well, that I understand.
That's super, that's a superseding law.
I'm just saying that there are animals in parks, there are animals, and we don't have any health issues right now.
Yeah, but deer, you're not bringing, everybody bring your deer over to the park, yeah.
I understand, I'm just saying that there are, there are birds, and there are all sorts of animals in the parks already that are.
I just view it as a health issue right now, that's all.
Okay.
Actually, I view the geese as a health issue too, I mean, I can't imagine, obviously, the other day I was driving by the golf course, and there were tons of geese, I can't imagine golfing, or through all that geese mess.
Clean it up every day.
Is that what they're doing?
Yep. These big blowers, they blow it over and they pick it all up.
Wow.
There's also here a change to the ordinance regarding the size of gatherings requiring a permit, from 25 to 15.
Yes.
Did you want to talk on that one?
Do you want to talk on it? That's another issue that the Park and Recreation Department has been experiencing problems, where the Parks Department would issue a permit for an organized event, and then other organizations that did not request, it just could be an organized group, a bunch of men, they could get together and not call, and basically take over those fields. So Mr. Denny feels that it's prudent that we, any, any group of individuals utilizing as an organized event that would utilize any of the parks, playgrounds, and the township, more than 15 or more would require a permit.
That would be like an organized running group too, anything, anybody?
If they're gonna, if they're gonna utilize the park and obstruct an organized event that's already has a permit, there's been problems where, it could be a baseball league that arrives, they have a permit, and there's 22 people already playing ball there, and it becomes a dispute. We have a permit, well, we're here, we're not leaving, and then, you know, if it's after hours, it causes a problem.
Mr. McCloskey?
I'm good.
Just gasping for air.
Just thinking.
What else? Thank you very much. Next on here, we have our Health Inspector Nancy is here from the Health Department to come up and speak to us about the backyard hens.
Hi, good evening. I was asked to look into some guidelines, and I guess regulations concerning backyard hens or chickens. Mostly, most of my information has come from Penn State Cooperative Extension, they have quite a lot of information on it. They also, I did list everything that our ordinance has already addressed, and they also requested, or recommend a 25-foot setback from the property lines, which I think was the major, from my understanding, that was the major stipulation in this. But I did break it down into noise, odor, pest control, coop construction, and some health and safety issues. I don't know if you, do you all have a copy, or?
You should be on your computer.
I can go over some of the, you know.
Yes, please.
Some of the main things, one of them, not allowing any roosters or male chickens.
It's a separate document.
My understanding was that they're having chickens for egg production, not-
Is it in here, or no?
Not raising it for meat or anything like that. So you don't need any roosters for egg production. They recommend a number of chickens between four and six. Obviously, noise and odor issues.
I don't have it here.
Related to the coops. Regular cleaning, obviously, to prevent odor. They also mentioned waterfowl being, I don't know if we're looking at that. Waterfowl being, you know, an issue for odor, to not permit, I don't know, if you wanted a bunch of ducks.
Oh, thanks.
Obviously, all chickens you'd want to have confined to the owner's property. And there are, there are a lot of recommendations for the coop construction.
Does everybody have that?
Did you say the setback was 25 feet?
That's what our current ordinance has, and that's also what's recommended in Penn State Cooperative Extension, as well as.
And that, there comes into concern, I mean, if you have a 25-foot property, if you have a 50-foot property.
50-foot property doesn't really give you any room.
Yeah. If you keep it at 25 foot.
25 feet is pretty much the, I think I saw one for 15 feet, otherwise the others were 50 feet and 100 feet from the residential dwellings.
So what would be, what about the side yard? So you said, you said 25 from the-
25 from the property line, all property lines.
All property lines, 25 feet has to be inward, off 25 feet.
And what would be the issue if we set that at 10-foot?
That might put, 25 might put it in the middle of somebody's backyard.
Not yours, but it definitely would in mine.
After property, so it's 50.
A good number of the houses in Haverford Town are 50 by 150, a majority of them, so telling somebody that, you know, 25 feet would give you the center of the yard, it would be, you know, you couldn't, you have no space.
Plus the 25 foot from the other side, so you really-
Right, yeah, you could be like paper thin. So, I mean, that-
I, I just wanted to mention everything that I've seen and read. I did see one for 15 feet, the only other exception I saw was Lower Marion, which-
I guess what I'm wondering is-
They worded it was, they just had under, they had 50 feet from the property line, but then they had an exception for too small fowl. That's all, that's the way it was worded, so.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is there a, more of an issue in a health situation if it's 25 foot, or if it's 10-foot?
No, I would assume that it was, it's just noise and odors.
Okay.
To the neighbors?
Wait, what, I'm just trying to think, I mean, it's, whether it's 25 foot from my fence, or if it's 10-foot from my fence, there, there-
I mean, I think it would eliminate the large majority of Haverford Town homes. 25 feet from the property line would eliminate, I mean, that's people-
Not against, not saying against you.
That would eliminate most of the homes.
Information that you have for us.
That would put it in-
15, 15 to 20 would be, then you could have a 10 or 20-foot coop.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but 25 would be, I think would prohibit all but 10% of the houses.
That's what I figured was the main issue, you know, with this, because I think, I believe that's what's currently in our ordinance, is the 25 feet.
I mean, we had, we had the example of the guy that came to the meeting, Jimmy, what was his name? He was in, he was in your ward, Mr. McGarry.
Pardon?
The guy who has, has the coop on Brookline Boulevard.
Yeah, Brendan Beach.
Brendan, yeah, I mean, I don't think that's 25 feet from the property line, right?
I wouldn't know.
You know?
If it's on Brookline Boulevard, it's a 50 by 150 lot, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a big yard in the back, I'll tell you that, he's-
It might be deep, but still from the sides.
Yeah, from the sides, we're talking-
The overriding thing was, we, I think our ordinance calls for a one-acre minimum lot, that was the other thing.
It does, at this time, and that's what the request, the petition is, is to, for households to have the option to have hens on their property that are less than that one acre. And how do we, how do we go forward on that? So the information is that, what you have here, that you have given us, and then our next step is to go for zoning, just to ask the zoning. All right?
I, I, I have concerns about this as well. I mean, we, we have in Delaware County, if not Philadelphia, a significant rodent problem in our neighborhoods. And as much as I like chickens too, I wouldn't mind doing that.
As long as they're on a six-foot leash.
Well, you like a lot of animals.
I'm an animal guy.
Yeah, you like dogs, but you don't want them around, you like chickens, but you don't want them near you.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, I'm just kidding, I'm just joking.
I think that because we've had this problem, we're telling residents to take down bird feeders, and now we're gonna put chickens in, and, and, am I, am I crazy, Larry, don't we tell people to take down bird feeders?
We recommend, we can't force them, but you're absolutely right, bird feeders are the number one cause. Nancy's an expert, she educates me all the time, but it's a big problem for rodents.
What is, what are your thoughts on that, Nancy? Do you think it'll be a problem with rodents having a coop as long as we're following those recommendations?
Yeah, most of the, as far as the feeding, the waste, and the cleanup of the pen is geared towards rodent control. I mean, that's what, you know, those guidelines are about. So it certainly could be a source if it's not maintained, and not, you know, and the feed isn't protected along with the waste product that, you know.
But our, but our ordinance would cover that, it would make sure that it was, if they were following-
The guidelines I had there, you know, there is a lot that it's pest and rodent control.
Then how do you, I mean, how would you enforce that?
That's what I was gonna ask, and what-
How do you enforce the-
And what's the fines?
It's gonna be complaint-driven, is what it's gonna be.
Yeah, someone would have to contact the Health Department, or someone would contact the-
Well, see, that's the point, by the time that happens, you have, you could have a rodent infestation. By the time that happens, and let me tell you, I've seen it, I've seen it on, in Westgate. The burrows that they, they dig, and they're, they can multiply very rapidly, you know that, Nancy, you've seen it, right? So by the time that happens, you already have a significant problem.
Well, speculation says you're saying, really, it's speculation.
We've got a rodent problem now.
Oh, yeah, we definitely have a rodent problem now.
That's what I'm talking about, well, I agree.
He's saying, he said speculation, no, it's no speculation.
No, 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 what I'm saying is that with the chickens, you're saying with the chickens, though, we could have a worse condition. I mean, we could, but we might not, or.
I mean, feed's gonna get out, you know that, I mean, feed's gonna fall where it shouldn't go, I mean, you know, it's gonna happen.
I don't know if it's gonna happen. That's what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying, all I'm saying is that I don't know if it's gonna happen. Any other?
Perfect world that we won't. Fox, that's right.
Well, you know, fox could like chihuahuas too, they're pretty small, who knows?
They do.
They do, they like cats.
They like chihuahuas, they like cats.
I mean, we do have a petition here where there's 200 and some people, 300 and some people, I guess, that has signed it, that do have an interest here in our community. I don't think we had that many people on the resolution for redistricting, but, I mean, we do have our due diligence to look into this, to see what we can do.
I don't disagree with that, and, and I'm thankful that Nancy's looking at this, but again, from my perspective, you're talking about a health issue, and possibly a safety issue, because of the significant problems that we have in our township. It's not, it's happening now, would you agree, we have a rodent problem?
Uh, yes.
So if there are, then you want-
Well, I think, I think there's-
An issue right now, so, and the problem is enforcement?
Well, I mean, I think the issue is, under this, the guidelines that Nancy has here, there's predator and pest control, and, you know, the food has to be in rodent-proof containers, and it has to be stored in that. So the issue becomes if that is spilled and not taken care of properly. I mean, part of what we have to consider, I think, is, is this a greater-than-average risk of creating a larger problem of, is there, is there a greater likelihood that this is not, that the coop is not gonna be taken care of? Because, I mean, if someone has a backyard dog, and they feed their dog in the backyard and leave that food out overnight too, that's, that's gonna attract rodents.
And that's happened.
Right, and I agree with you, but I'm saying-
And don't fish has happened, where we've, we've had to go, I mean, didn't you go to different people's property and tell them you gotta pick up the dog waste?
Yeah.
And that's controlled by enforcement.
Yes, but by that time, we already had a problem.
So, so I think the issue is then, where, where are you gonna, where are we as this board gonna sort of set that line in terms of ordinance protection? And that's, that's something that we can have a healthy debate over, but, I mean, that's the real issue. What Nancy has here is, is something that's set up, that if followed, would not create a larger rodent problem. The issue is if these guidelines are not followed, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about?
Correct, yes.
And again, by that time, you've got a significant issue.
But there's guidelines out there for everything, such as for dogs too, in the backyard, for cats. You know, I mean, it's not, why don't we even put it forward to a trial period? Why not try that? I'm just saying.
Nancy, what would be the fine if you go out and someone's not maintaining it? We talked about fines for, might as well, if it's $300 for the dog waste, what is it for?
Don't talk to Andy about that.
It's gotta be $2,000 for this. That's it, I've had it with these people.
Mostly, the, for property maintenance chapter is not to exceed 1,000, and it calls to prosecution. That's for the rodent control.
Nancy, are there ordinances in Lower Marion, Radnor, Newt, Marple, Upper Darby, Springfield adjacent? Does anybody already have an existing ordinance on this?
Yeah, Lower Marion.
Marble, Marble Town fires an acre with 100-foot setback from human habitation, and 50-foot from any property line. Springfield, under their zoning, the only thing I could locate was, it seemed like there was no farm animals at all. I can't be 100% going through zoning ordinances. Lower Marion is the one that did have an exception, they had a 100-foot, 100 feet from the building, 50 feet from the property line, with the exception of 50 feet from the property owner's house. But they did list an exception for too small fowl, from those setbacks, so. They didn't give setbacks for having just two small ones, they just listed that as an exception. And Radnor, I really couldn't locate, they talked a lot about commercial farming and commercial livestock.
Can we, can you just, I mean, so we don't have to debate this without enough information, can you discuss with, they, Lower Marion seems like the only one that's got an ordinance? Can you just talk to your counterparts, find out what complaints, what issues that they've had, and present that to us so we understand what the ramifications may be, so that we can make an informed decision?
Can I have a chicken for, as a pet?
Inside, you can probably?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I can have a, if I want a dog, you know, I can have as a domestic animal, a pet, and if it's in the backyard, I have to have it fenced in area. I have to clean up the defecation, what, in 24 hours, I think it is, that's, you know, to take care of the animal. I have to keep it on a leash, et cetera, et cetera. Well, if I wanted a chicken as a, as a pet, I mean, you can have a belly pig, you can have-
I'd like to see that walking on a leash, you know.
Well, no, yeah, all I'm saying is that if I wanted to have one as a pet, or two as a pet, could I do that?
I think it's already in our ordinance.
I have prohibited animals I know listed in the thing, and I don't have it in front of me to.
That's one of the prohibited animals?
Farm animals, I think it is. They could prohibit, yeah.
So is a pig, but you're allowed to have that one, right? People take the pig out to walk it, and people-
Can't have a pig.
Can I talk about the setback requirement?
Does a doghouse have to be 50, 25-foot from the?
So if this, if the 25-foot setback from all sides of property lines would eliminate most properties or households in Haverford Township from having chickens, I'm just wondering if we could make an exception, or either reduce it to 10 feet, or say, say, at the pro- property line with the approval of your neighbor, subject to the approval of your neighbor. So, your neighbor would actually have to sign off on allowing for that chicken coop to be, you know, on the property line or 10 feet. And that neighbor would also serve as the person who would kind of police, to make sure that things were done, there, there weren't rodents.
Not a bad idea.
They're the ones who are gonna call the police, or, or you, or whoever, to tell you about a problem. So, you keep, you keep the neighbors, you wanna make sure the neighbor, it might be the neighbor ought to be happy. So, if the neighbor signs off on something that's less than 25 feet, seems to be to make, make sense.
Could you limit the number of chickens, too? Yeah, you could, you could say if, if it's, you know, 25 feet would be the regulation, and the only exception to that would be if you had the signature of all adjacent properties to that.
Would that work, Lori, or is that, would that be, that be-
I'm sorry, I think if you wanna do that, you want to, um, get a signature of any property owner that is, where the coop will be less than 25 feet from a property line.
Right, right, exactly.
Because arteries establish that minimum standard without getting the neighbor's approval. So, if you're, if you wanna reduce it to under the 25 feet, that seems like a logical way of handling it.
Yeah, 'cause I think they'll be, the neighbor will be the, the enforcement arm for us, I think.
I think that the thing is, then, it almost forces you into a situation where you require-
No pigs.
What's that?
Where you require a permit-
Pigs?
To erect, like, an exterior maintenance facility for a, one of the animals that's in the list. You know, the chickens, um, Lord. Well, we have the large animals, the small, but the small animals were, like, chickens and ducks and geese. But Nancy was just talking about the waterfowl, and there being limits in other communities. So, maybe you only wanna do it for certain of the small animals that are kept as pets, and not as farm animals.
Is there anything that constitutes, sorry, a farm animal and a pet?
Can I also just say, I mean, these are guidelines that she provided for us, so the ordinance itself, we wouldn't get till-
Right.
-September, probably, right?
I get it.
So, I mean, there's, there's additional time to discuss this.
There is, but I, I'm just trying to think, where else do we do that?
No, I, I agree with you. This is the venue. I'm just, I just wanna make sure we're, we're all on the same page about what we're talking about. There's, there's not an actual ordinance on the table, a vote on next week, yeah.
No, there isn't, there isn't. This is the Health Department's-
Right.
Giving us, yes. Mr. Siegel? Yeah, we need to be careful, though, in whatever we draft, because the various provisions in Section 49 of the code have very specific definitions for everything related here. And unless we look at how they interplay, we're gonna end up with conflicting regulations. Because I'm just looking at the, there's maintenance regulations for small animals, which would include chickens, but, but under that provision, they have to be 25 feet already from, no, less than 25 feet from the property line. So, there's, there's a whole series of things, we have to be very careful in looking at this. This is not as simple as it sounds.
No, it's not.
Because-
It's not.
4910 with the maintenance regulations alone would probably have to be completely revised, or looked at, just to make sure, because I could see all the, I could see the conflicts just listening to this discussion.
Yeah, that section's extremely confusing.
The, well, part of the problem is that the definitions that we use in our code are not consistent with all of the definitions used under state law, so that we've got different definitions, and state law refers to domestic animals. There's, there's a number of issues here.
So, we need to rewrite 49?
Well, yeah, we may.
Well, I'm gonna, I do wanna say that initially, you had almost the same exact set of regulations, and then you amended it to reduce the setback of the housing of small animals in 2004. So, you've already done this once. Your ordinance is 2432. So, you have already reduced the area from, initially, it was a 50-foot setback, at least 50 feet and 100 feet from the home, and a one-acre minimum. So, we're net, we've now broken it, further broken it down, so we took the small animals and put them on a 25-foot setback. So, I think we've been walking back the regulations, as we've seen that, you know, we're not experiencing any problems. I do understand what your concern is about rats, and contributing to what is a serious problem.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I think one acre is, is probably sufficient. To change that, I think, would be a mistake. But, you know, there's, there are other issues, like disposing of a dead chicken. You, you have in here, that's in accordance with the disposal of a rodent. How would, how would you properly dispose of a rodent? Putting it in the trash? I'm not trying to be funny, but how would you dispose of a rodent?
Chicken wings, chicken breasts, chicken-
I mean, that's how, that's how you would dispose of a-
But you can't, actually, you're right, that, but you can't, you can't use the chicken for-
You can't what? I'm sorry?
You wouldn't be able to use the chicken, though, for edible reasons.
No, but you just throw it in the regular trash, is what I'm asking. How, how do you dispose of a chick? And how big do the, do chicken coops have to be to allow chickens to thrive without being cooped up?
You like that, right? It's very funny.
Recommendations for that, for, on the Penn State-
Range free, on range free.
Extension service.
That's what I'm talking about.
I think it's two square foot per-
I'm sorry, two. Don't they need exercise, run around?
Then you're gonna have an exercise. They give, they give the spacing requirements for the coop, the exercise area, and the nesting. They even give you dimensions for that.
So, how big is, with, with one need, if they don't have an acre of lot?
Square foot per chicken, right?
Yeah, two square feet.
Two square feet per chicken, she said.
Is that what she said in here? I'm sorry, Bill.
In the coop, anyway. I think the exercise area, they consider it, if you provide one, apparently you don't even have to provide one, is like three square feet, yeah. And a nest is supposed to be 12 by 12, or, or one foot by one foot.
How do they get that little tread bundle work? And their exercise-
I think Purdue gives them two square feet per chicken.
Then, my point is, is that we, we have ordinances and all for, for pets, for dogs, and what have you, and people are supposed to follow those ordinances, and those, and I just can't see why, those who want chickens, they would follow the rules, too. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that there's gonna be a crisis-
Bill made a suggestion, I hear what you're saying, but Commissioner Wexler made a suggestion, I think we need to find out what the other townships are experiencing.
Yeah, exactly, I think that's, that's correct.
And, you know, get an accurate-
And that's fine. This isn't, this isn't on the agenda for next week.
No, I know, I get it, I get it.
You know, this is the discussion time.
I just, I just don't, look, I, I love animals, I really do. I wish we had, I would, I would love to have chickens, dogs-
Like them near me.
We've, we've had, we have a cat now. We had a dog and a cat, but I've seen people in Newtown Square have chickens, and, and they have a coop, and they're running around. And they're, they're, they're noisy, even though they're not-
So are my neighbor's kids, you know, it's-
Well, yeah, but you can, you, you almost like to hear children play. I don't wanna hear some chicken dink going nuts.
Right, I hear you. But, you know, I mean, it's, I think we have an obligation here-
I love dogs, but a barking dog is barking for a long time. People complain. People call the police all the time about barking dogs.
Absolutely. But we, we still have an, I feel, is an obligation here to address the matter, because of the number of people who are asking to see if they could have-
No, I, I get it.
The opportunity to have chickens.
And I'm sure the gentleman that came, he said his ziri was very clean, and I believe him, but, but if you enact this, and you allow so many people to have this, you're not gonna get everyone like this gentleman came. I, I, trust me, you're not gonna get that.
Yeah, I, I would ask the, the board if they would entertain me to please to continue this-
No, it's fine.
Discussion.
Well, again, it's Commissioner Wexler's recommendation that Nancy look into what other townships are doing, and problems that they face. And I would, I would ask about the rodent issue. I mean, I'm sure Lower Mar- I've heard Lower Marion has the problem as well with rodents.
I think we, I mean, I think your regulations already address, you know, the proper maintenance of the facility, you know, picking up the droppings, storing the feed in rat-proof and fly-type containers, and at least twice a week, picking up any litter or droppings from the animals. So, you already have some pretty stringent regulations. But, the thing is, and I mean, I'm gonna say that nobody's been to the township about the chickens that are there, and I know that they don't meet the 25 feet. So, getting the message out to people that, hey, there are these standards, unless we receive a complaint, we wouldn't know. So, you either wanna regulate them, you know, or you have to permit them, or you just wait until you receive a complaint, and then respond to a complaint. So, that's, if you, and if you regulate them, Commissioner Lewis's suggestion, if it's, housing is less than 25 feet, get the sign off of an adjoining neighbor.
Oh, I totally agree with that. I think that is critical. Because I, I know I wouldn't, I wouldn't like it. I would wanna know, too, because by the time somebody puts it in, it's only five feet from a property line, I'd be pretty upset.
This information is available. You gave us this nuisance control. I can put this out for public?
Yeah, moreover, you want to take a look at Chapter 49, at your existing standards. It's 49 subsection 10, so 4910.
Right. And, and because I know for those who are interested, they, they probably would like, you know, to see the report. And that's, okay.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Vera. I know you're one person to cover this entire township, I realize that. And thank you very much for all the, you know, the research that you do on this, Nancy. And I'm sure tomorrow you'll be off, running in other directions. So, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Before she goes, I, I too wanna thank her, because she was instrumental in helping with the rodent problem in Westgate. And I, I don't know if I got a chance to thank you, but I appreciate your quick response, your educating the residents. You did a great job with that, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful job in the second, also.
All right. Thank you, Inspector.
You had the same issue.
Same issue.
Same issue, and she did a great job.
Same dentistry, you had the same issue as well.
Yeah.
All right, so this is available, then. And I will send that out.
Took care of that, yeah. There was an issue, there was, there was one issue, one, one.
Okay. I'm just trying to go back now to my, here we go. A little bit more than my edge of sketch. Here we go.
In Westgate, right, in Greenbrook.
All right. We have the, and any, and if you, anybody that wants that information, some of your email address, and I'll send it back to you in the PDF. Police Department Crime Update. Chief?
Police Department Report for July 2017. Parking tickets, 235 were issued, 233 traffic citations, 154 written warnings. We had homicide on 7/29/2017, the 2300 block of Havreford Road. 29-year-old Darbith's resident was shot two times by an assailant, who has since been identified. The investigation, investigation is ongoing with Delaware County CID, and the Philadelphia Police Department, T-Technis. Had a robbery at the Burger King. Aker broke through the drive-in window while it was open, armed with a firearm, took cash from the registers. And the funny part about this was the front door was open, he could've walked in. Strong-arm robbery, well, Burger King's no longer there this tour, last week, so-
Yeah, exactly. They knocked it down.
Strong-arm robbery, Chatham Park School, bicycles were taken. Two juveniles and one adult were arrested and charged. Had a burglary, 200 block of Kedmore Road, Fourth Century, two Chinese statues that were taken, the house was ransacked. 1,000 block attached to Bligh Fourth Century in the daytime between 7:00 and 4:00, a TV was taken. And the 700 Afro Road, has a Sitco gas station at Fourth Century. Had a burglary attempt, the 1300 block of Leader Road was investigated, was unfounded. We had seven thefts from vehicles, Beechwood Road, Seal Road, Washington Avenue, Woodbine, Woodbine Road, Toon Woodbine, Foster, and the YMCA. Of them, seven, only one was forced entry, and that was at the YMCA. K-9 usage, stolen vehicle and drug, for two arrests, three vehicle investigations, K-9 and a burglary scene, alarms of open buildings, open vacant house, a robbery with a building search, the drug investigation, building search, and homicide investigation assistance. Any questions?
Phew. I do, I do have something to say about the, and it's off the subject, not, has nothing to do with police, it's the Burger King. I've been getting a lot of people ask me, you know, what's going on there? They're building another Burger King. They knocked it down, and building another Burger King. No Chick-fil-A, no Pudding Lane, no, none of that is going in there. It's going to be a Burger King.
I, I have a comment.
You love Burger King, I know, but-
I do love Burger King.
It's gotta go.
I, I, I can't eat Burger King, but I, I do love Burger King. Chief, in respect to the homicide that occurred, the, the reward for any information is up to how much now?
$7,500. $5,000 was put up by Delaware County District Attorney's Office, and $2,500 was put up by the federal marshals, federal marshals, who are also in the case.
And they should go to our website? Is there's a number, is there a number for any tips that you have?
There's multiple tip lines. Do we have that available down there?
610-853-9213 is our tip line, and the 215 is Crime Stoppers. I'd have to look up the number, but if you do our tip line, we're recording all the phone calls.
That goes right to a detective's phone directly.
And, and there were some residents that had asked me if they, and you, you had informed us that you believe that the suspect is not in Havreford Township, correct?
He's in the Philadelphia area, correct.
Thank you. Thanks for the quick response that you, you did, and the police did that night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, updates? There is a continued discussion. Here we have Mr. Siegel on the, the process for the applications for reorganization. Yeah, briefly. I revised the process that we had discussed at the last meeting in a couple of ways. I took Mr., Commissioner Lewis's suggestion, and all applicants would be required to be interviewed. I also added in a process for vacancies, or, or on an empty, you know, terms that are vacant because someone has left, so that there's also a process for doing that. Otherwise, it's essentially the same. But I tried to revise it based on the sentiment of the board. Thank you, Commissioner. If there's any questions?
That's well done.
Let's see, we have, I'm sorry?
No, Mr. Lewis.
Yes, and segueing into Mr. Lewis, there, the proposal for amending articles of cooperation with RHM.
Actually, I would defer to Commissioner Wexler, because he's chair of that committee. I don't know how my name got behind it, other than I submitted it, but, hey, Bill, you But maybe, Bill, you could...
Yeah, I think what, what we wanna do is, is take what they're proposing and have it run through Mr. Burns and Mr. Panoni, to make sure, so we can compare it, to see what it's gonna cost and what our alternatives would be. And then have our staff present to us, if we have an alternative to it, what they are, what the cost would be, and the recommendation by staff as to what we should do. So I think...
I think that makes sense.
A legal review and a technical review by our engineers is...
Yeah. And what's, what's the timeframe on that? Do you expect in the next...
I think they should all look at the agreement in the next couple of weeks, I guess, right?
Yeah, sure.
By next week, probably, yeah.
Okay. And like any agreement, which would go before the solicitor. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wexler, do you have an update on the tax credit?
Yeah, ordinance P-14, 2007, the enactment, there's a state law that Representative Santura was co-sponsor of, to offer property tax credits to our qualifying volunteer firemen throughout there. So we've put it out there. The Bureau of Fire has met many times, the chiefs are getting together. They've come up with a point system, it's a 200-point credit system to do that. I don't think that we're gonna bring it up next week to do this, this month, probably be in September. The five, as you probably can guess, we have five different fire companies, so the criteria for the point system, we want, I've asked them to make it uniform between the five companies, so that we don't have any disparities and quirks between, throughout the township. So they're revising that, their committees are getting together, the chiefs, and because of vacations this month, I think two or three of the chiefs are on vacation, they can't get together in August. So I think what we'll do is we'll push that to September, so that we get a better cohesive agreement on what the point system should look like. And then, and then we're gonna administer it through documents to the township with their input, so that, so that it's fair between all five companies, and we don't have a bias there. But the, the state rule is, it's a credit for active volunteer firemen. So it's geared towards those people that actually come and fight fires and do that stuff. So that's, they just need another month or so to get their act together.
So we're, so it's lawful, it can be done, it's being done elsewhere?
Yeah, it's, it's being done a lot of different...
Yeah. It makes a lot of sense, because otherwise, you know, we're losing volunteer fire...
Right now, I think we give our volunteer firemen free parking at meters.
Free parking what?
They get free parking at a meter in the township.
How do they do that, if it's a point?
They get a tag that hangs from your mirrors, so. But this is a little bit meatier.
Yeah, I think we definitely...
For those that don't know, and the reason that the tax credit's probably just a small attempt to do that, you've got a lot of firemen that, that don't own homes. We have a lot of young people between the ages of 16 and something that live with their parents. The parents don't qualify for the tax, the tax break on the house, because they're not the firemen, they're not the property owners. So we're not talking about a lot of people, but what we're trying to do is we're trying to entice some of the younger people that grow up to stay in our community.
Absolutely.
And to give them some mechanism where they can afford to live in this community. Because a lot of, a lot of what happens is these kids grow up, they go away to college, they come back, they're still firemen, it's in their blood. They get married, they look for a home here, they can't afford it, they move somewhere else, where they can afford. So it's some small bit of incentive to try and keep them in our township and keep them as residents.
Right. And this incentive actually is just for municipal tax, not for school tax or county tax?
Right. It's just our township tax.
Yep.
That's great.
Bill, does that, just to raise the question, does that include, is it, is it a percentage off the, the trash fee as well?
Now, that, that would be off the actual...
Off the actual millage?
Off the actual millage for the, like a 20%.
It's a 20%.
10%?
Maximum 20%.
Maximum 20%.
So, Bill, just to give people an idea, what, what do we say by having an all-volunteer force in this township?
Well, there's, there's varying looks at it. I think Larry's looked at it over the years, we've looked at this when we did the EMS evaluations. The best guess is, is it's somewhere between eight and 11 and a half million dollars.
By having a volunteer force?
Depends on how you define certain things, but the minimum would probably be eight, eight to nine million, and at the top, you're talking 11 and a half to 12 million dollars a year of additional revenue it would take to have a paid fire department in this township.
Yeah. So this is just...
Volunteers save us, you could probably make an argument that 10 million is probably a fair number of the savings. It could be, you could argue a little bit higher, but, but I'd say 10 million is a fair saving.
A very small way of acknowledging that.
Let me just add, when, when you're doing it at eight million, you're only doing two fire companies, not five.
Yeah, we, we have five fire departments. I mean, the problem we have is just like any other municipality in the, in the Commonwealth, is our, our staffing during the daytime hours is, is gonna be critical. And that's not just Havreford, that's, that's across the Commonwealth. People work, most people don't work in the community where you live, except you're in a rural community typically. We're fortunate that we have five fire companies. If there's a house fire in this township, we have five fire companies that respond. So we'll, right now, probably for the next foreseeable future, in the next few years, we have enough manpower between the five companies that can man trucks during the daytime period, plus we have mutual aid from our neighboring communities. But we're starting to see the burdens. We respond to fires, and Mr. Gentili can tell you, we respond, we're on the first alarm in half of Brumall Township. We're on the first alarm in half of Springfield Township. Communities are realizing they, they may not have, if it's an active fire, if it's a working fire, John can probably address this much more detail, but if it's a working fire during the day, you're gonna get companies from other municipalities that come in here. If, if all five of our companies, as we did on the fire down on, what was it, the fatal, we had all five fire companies down in one there, we, we had to bring in other fire companies to man our stations in case it was a second fire in the township. And that was during the day. That was Martin Luther King Day, Strathmere Road. That was a big house fire. It took all the resources we had, that we were very fortunate, it was a holiday. We have a lot of volunteer firemen that are township workers, so we had good turnout that day.
Barnabes was a recent one.
Yeah, Barnabes was on a Sunday, you know, it was on Sunday morning. I was driving five kids to the race, the Broad Street Race that day. It was another good example of a big fire that we contained very well, good sprinkler system stopped there. But, but you can see, during a weekday, when people are working, mutual aid is very, very key in all municipalities. We're very fortunate that we have five companies. And Oakmont Fire Company, we're fortunate, they have a fair amount of township, school district workers that are close by. So we, we know we can get enough manpower today, 10 years from now.
Who knows, yeah.
Who knows what's gonna happen and, and what's there. But, so this is just a small token, you know, it's, we're not losing money, we're not, you know, if, if we had to pick up a $10 million tab to have a paid fire department, we'd, we'd be looking big taxes.
I totally agree, Bill, and I, I would support this totally. I wish we could think of some other ways that we can assist these volunteers who not only respond to fires, but accidents as well, as you know, Bill.
Yeah, well...
I mean, we go on the blue route, if there, there are trappings and fires and on cars and...
I think what people miss is, yes, we respond to fires, but the training requirement of what we're asking these men and women is, it's over 300 hours of training just to become a basic fireman. That's of your own time. So your 300-plus hours of training to become a Fire One, Fire Two, and to be certified in vehicle rescue and, and stuff, there's a, there's a huge time commitment to training. And it's just, this is just, again, it's just a small token of what we can do.
So, Bill, do you think this is, do you think this is adequate, or do you think we should do, should do more?
Well, I think this is what we're allowed to do.
Is it max?
I mean, the state...
This is...
Max is, I think, 20% up to 20%.
Is the max, we're doing the max?
Yeah.
My only question, just for procedural, is when are our tax bills sent out? When do we send them?
Actually, sent out in the last January.
Okay.
The process starts much before then.
Right. But my understanding of the Act is that the list has to be certified 45 days in advance of when tax bills are mailed, and if you do it December 15th, you're probably not gonna make the tax bills for the next year, so we need to look at that carefully.
Right.
We actually don't generate, we can't generate, because we don't get the data file from the county until probably the 15th of January. But it is a very small window, from the 15th of January till January 28th, when we send them out.
But, yeah, but, but what I'm saying is, my reading of the state law is that that list has to be presented to the township 45 days in advance of mailing the tax bills, and I don't think this ordinance does that.
We can look at it and make sure...
And you wanna make sure of the timing?
We'll get the timings.
Yeah, that's my concern. Looking at it's...
So we really know what kind of numbers we're dealing with? You know, I don't know how many, what this population is going to be. And this year might be a little, you know, we might have to adjust our calendar a little bit after we know how many people we're dealing with. But we'll, we'll work with everybody, and I'm sure the fire companies will work with us.
Thank you. So that's now for, thank you very much. Taking that off the agenda, can we take that off now, or is that, do we have to bring that up next week to table it?
I think you could do either way. I mean, your agenda's really not even established till February.
Okay, so then we could just take it off.
Take it off.
Yeah, so we'll talk about it in September?
Yeah. That makes sense. Okay, that will come off the agenda. Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner, for, for your report on that.
Mr. President, I have one more committee update.
Oh. For committee?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Because there are, and then we'll, we'll hit on these other ordinances.
Okay. So before I begin on the police committee update, I wanna thank the police and all of our volunteer firefighters and EMTs and paramedics for coming to National Night Out. That was a very successful evening. And it was, it was probably the biggest crowd I've seen in years. And the K-9 demonstration, a lot of, a lot of residents commented on how great that was, and how these dogs are so well-trained. And again, it's a lot of hours in training as well, same thing with the, with the police. So thanks to everyone that was involved in that. The police committee meeting met on July 24th, and that consisted of myself, Commissioner Lewis, Commissioner Oliva, and Commissioner McGarrett. We went over with the police chief how the cameras would operate, and we were very satisfied on, on all the responses that the chief did provide us. The police officer can start the camera himself, or when the red lights and sirens come on, the, the camera's activated. There's an automatic download at the end of the day, when the police pull in. And we have, also have cameras on the dashboard and in the back area, correct, Chief? And we are the first major department in Delaware County full squad to have body cameras, so I commend you, Chief, and your deputy chief, and your staff for, for taking the initiative to put this in place. This wasn't a capital budget last year, and there was a question about minors, and that, it doesn't matter. If you're a minor, you get pulled over just like anyone else. Parents will get called, as, as the norm is now. And apparently, the, the D.A.'s office is aware of your initiative here. Is there anything you wanna add to this, Chief? Or anybody in the police committee wants to add something?
No, you carry it well.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you said, we're the first major police department in Delaware County to implement these, we're in the, in the training and operate, not the operational phase yet. We're still going through the testing process, so they're not fully rolled out yet. It's, it's, I think it's a plus for the officers, that if there's any question, if there's a complaint, we can look at that video right away. What we have found with in-car videos, when we had complaints against officers or an issue that came up, we're able to either validate it or find out that it was, was a bogus. So it's, it's a safety, it is a safety mechanism for police officers also. It's, it's a learning process for us, it's new, but it's something that is, that is part of where we, where we are in the world now. Everybody's videotaping everything, so, you know, you see the videos, what you see on TV or any half, or what actually happens, that we have the full version, God forbid something serious should happen, so. And I appreciate, we commend the commissioners for financing this, it's a, a lot of money to do this, and it came from your, your vote to proceed with this.
Chief, one, one thing, you do inform the person that was pulled over that they are being recorded. You do that now anyway, right?
We do that now, as soon as, as soon as possible. We don't, we don't do it right away, as soon as it's, the officer has the opportunity or informed they're being taped, audio and, and video.
And I just wanna make sure, the Pennsylvania Supreme Court ruled last month about, that, that police recordings like this are public, and are we gonna have a policy that'll be consistent with that decision?
Yes.
Okay.
Policy is in place.
Thank you.
You mean, making it available to the public if they request it?
The Supreme Court ruled that essentially dash cam videos are public unless they're part of an investigation, so I just wanna make sure that our policy's consistent with that.
In fact, we, we just upgraded our policy because, because of that Supreme Court decision.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Anything further on your committees? Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it. Next week, we have several ordinances and resolutions going forward. There's, anybody have any questions regarding any of those individual, those particular ordinances? Commissioner Siegel, you had one...
Yeah, I just wanna, we have on here something that's been going on for a long time, and the dedication of Brittany Lane, which is the street at the opposite the end of Darby Road. Somehow, that area had never been dedicated to the township, and the residents have requested it. I know Mr. Panoni's looked at the road and his wit up, and the ordinance of dedication is on the agenda for next week. I don't, do you know if there's anything else to add?
Have you did that with...
Yeah, we've done that.
Um...
With the reserve and other areas.
But in this particular case, there is a right-of-way. When the subdivision was done, it was submitted by First Lathrum Corporation, and it calls out a road that's proposed to be dedicated to the township. The interesting thing is that the township gave approval on this in 1989. The homes were finally built, built out in the early 90s, and the developer had not offered the, the improvements to the township for dedication. In fact, the residents of the community were the ones that were pursuing this, and they've reached out to the developer, who was still around, to, to see whether or not he would be amenable to something like this. Now, Dave has been working on reviewing the legal descriptions. We have a couple of things that we have to work out on the legal descriptions. I don't know if Dave wants to get into them now, but we have a solid description of the Brittany right-of-way. We have some issue with the, with the Sprawl Road, because as you know, Sprawl's a state highway. So the only thing we would be taking is the ultimate right-of-way, and we seem to have a hiccup in getting what we're looking for understood by the, by the group. There also seems to be, according to their amended bylaws, an underground stormwater facility, which is not on the, on the record plan. So we're trying to locate exactly where this underground facility is. And, and the records are pretty muddled, and as you can imagine, a 30-year-old case file is in archive storage, so we're, we're having some difficulty laying our hands on some of this information. And according to the residents, there's been a big turnover in residency, so there isn't any solid history there either.
So we should, will we be able to vote next week, or what do you think?
Yeah, we're keeping it on, because it has to be done by ordinance.
Right.
And an ordinance requires two readings, and worst-case scenario, when we get to the September meeting, if we don't have it worked out, we could pull it then.
For, for another month, yeah. Okay.
So I just, just a question for you or Dave. How, how do we determine that a road is sufficient or in good, good enough shape for us to take dedication? Does it have to have a certain amount of useful life, or before it has to be repaid before we take it, or how does, how do you make that determination?
Well, that's a good question. If you remember, we went through the same thing off of Cooper Town.
Yeah, Conarven, yeah.
Yep, yep. Now, little bit of a different situation there. In that case, that road was never intended to be dedicated. The HLA brought that up to a certain standard, reasonable standard ahead of time, and then we accepted dedication of it. This case, this was always intended to be dedicated.
Yeah.
So it was built 30 years ago, it's, it's, it meets this requirement as part of plan. We spot-checked the width, we looked at the curb. So I guess the simplest way to say is it looks like a road that's about 30 years old. But there's nothing out of the ordinary that makes it look like it's a severely deteriorated road, or deteriorating quicker than 30 years. It's not being brought up to a brand-new standard prior to acceptance. So what we're accepting is exactly what it is, it's a 30-year-old road.
Which we should've done 30...
Yeah, I think that's the simplest way to say it. Larry's mentioned that. We're really rock-solid on the Brittany Road part of the dedication document. It describes it. It should've been, it should've been offered back in the 90s, it would've, it would've been accepted, just like we've accepted other roads. Get a little bit of anomaly out on Sprawl Road, but I'm, I'm not too worried about being able to straighten that out.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, trying to keep within the ordinance of a 90-minute meeting. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the other ordinances or resolutions that are scheduled for next week? Mr. Gentili, anything about the mutual EMS aid agreement?
It's actually not EMS, it's fire and disaster agreement. It's, it's a common agreement that we have with all townships. Low Marion asked us to put together, if we would sign it. I had no issues with it, I support it. Volunteer fire departments would support it as well.
Thank you. Okay, and...
I have a question about the salt, if you get to that one.
Okay, the 2018 budget adoption schedule, October 31st is when we'll see it first. see it first, okay. Nider Hall, paving of the driveway in the past contract?
Opened up the bids this morning, and they'll be awarded, you'll, you'll have that in your next attachment, to be awarded for Monday night's meeting, and that, that's all HUD money. We've been planning that for almost two years now. It was a long delay because we were waiting for the HUD monies to be approved, so that should be done. Came in within budget, within a few, two or three thousand dollars, a little bit more than what, but again, it's being paid by HUD, doesn't come out of our, our operation or our capital.
Thank you. Road salt, Mr. Lewis?
Just a quick, quick question. I saw your chart. So, we do a ten township compact and bid that out?
Yes.
I'm just curious as to why some years we got it cheaper than the state, and some years we're more expensive than the state.
It's just supply and demand for the.
And when you buy it in the, when you buy, it's set, it's set up front though, right?
Yes.